Having arrived at, having arrived at seven o'clock, I would, I would request everybody to take appropriate places and can call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order and ask Clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Bowersox Johnson, Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Brandon's here.
Ah, Mr. Bowersox Johnson is, is here. So, I would first like to ask if there are any additions to the agenda suggested. Hearing none, I would ask if there are any staff reports that we should hear at this time. Mayor Pressing.
I'd like to read a proclamation for the American Red Cross. Whereas the American Red Cross Mid-Illinois Chapter works tirelessly through its employees and volunteers to provide comfort and assistance when disaster strikes, provide 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, collect and distribute life-saving blood, and provide training in life-saving skills and emergency preparedness education; and whereas the American Red Cross Mid-Illinois Chapter serves seven counties in central Illinois, including Champaign County; and whereas this month is designated to recognize its volunteers, donors, and board members for their contribution to disaster relief, service to the Armed Forces, blood collection, and health education, now therefore I, Laurel Lent Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim March 2013 as American Red Cross Month in the City of Urbana, and encourage all Americans to support this organization in its noble humanitarian mission. And I believe we have a gentleman here representing the Red Cross, Carl Baker, the Executive Director. I'll come over here.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I'd like to present the City of Urbana with just a little token of our appreciation. So, thank you very much.
Any, any comments or other ruminations? Okay. Staff report, yes, Ms. Tyler.
I had a staff report, I have an announcement, and I also wanted to make some comments regarding the.
Oh, do you have your mic on?
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to make some comments regarding the building condemnations that occurred the week before last at 1302, 1304, and 1401 Silver. And I recognize there was an awful lot of concern about the process and the safety of the tenants and their disposition. Wanted to assure the council that we are looking at revising some of our procedures for these relocations. And just to reiterate, there are three things that we have to consider in these situations. First is the safety of the tenants and the buildings, and this was a situation where we really did need to act immediately upon receiving the structural engineering report regarding the safety of the walkways and stairways at the addresses. Secondly, we seek to prevent homelessness. It's very important in making sure that people have alternative places to live and are sheltered. And third would be to work with the tenants and to inform them of their rights and their alternatives, and assist them in that manner. And so we'll be looking at making sure that we can do all three of these items. We do have resources available on our website. One is our summary of the landlord-tenant ordinance, which is on the website. And second is a quick help guide that we've developed that's in both English and Spanish. And what we would like to do is also accompany these with a, a letter explaining the process, and that's something that we're working with the tenant union to prepare that. We do have a tenant relocation fund that we have developed over the last few years. We do still have funds available in that, and potentially would be able to add to that fund when we consider the social service funding. Next, I would say that I have been in touch with the Housing Authority, and there's now a process for tenants to potentially receive preferential vouchers. It takes a little bit of time, but this is a policy change that the Housing Authority has undertaken, and there's a process that we could request that on behalf of the tenants. Currently, we are working with the tenants and the relocated units to make sure that those are, are good units and following up on building safety items. And I would thank Esther Pat and Diane Marlin for all the help that they provided the tenants and really bringing the constituent services to a, to a whole new level. Would also want to thank, strongly thank the building safety staff and grants management staff, John Schneider, Clay Byer, Randy Burgett, and Stephen Christman for all their efforts in working on the situation with the tenants. And I would note that they were working on this issue with the short staffing, and that one of our inspectors has been out on extended sick leave. Any questions on that report?
Thank you very much. Any other, any questions or observations? Ms. Marlin.
We'd just add, Esther Pat also provided, we had asked last week if she would provide a sample letter that could be given to tenants advising them of their rights, and she, she does have that drafted and will be, I guess, sending that.
Yeah.
Forward that to you. I just got a copy of that.
Other, other questions or comments? One, quickie. Mr. Lewis.
With the cooperation with the Housing Authority, did they establish a timeline for the acceptance of vouchers?
Well, it, it does take a little bit of time because there needs to be public notice, so it could take up to 20 days, but we would seek to shorten this, that as much as we could.
Okay. Other, other input or, or questions? Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, not on this topic, a different topic?
Can I?
Oh, okay, yes, or.
I have an announcement, but I can get back to it.
Okay, so we'll, okay, we'll hear your announcement, and then we'll, we're up for Mr. Roberts.
Okay, wholly different topic. I'm pleased to announce that our very own Christina McClelland, who's our Public Arts Coordinator, has been named by Girl Scouts of Central Illinois as a Woman of Distinction. So we're very, very proud of Christina and her accomplishments in the area of public art.
Yeah, we knew that. Mr. Roberts, I think you had an announcement.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with the public in general, the first really showing of the new announcement that we're going to have, Malawi Mixer, which is a basically kind of a, a party thrown by the Sister Cities Commission here in Urbana. And we're doing this because we're having a delegation of six visitors from Zomba, Malawi, our sister city, arriving in Urbana between March 23rd and 29th. So on Tuesday evening, we're going to be having a celebration to greet them at the IMC in downtown Urbana, that's the Independent Media Center. And more information is forthcoming about that in details.
I don't see anybody else moving up for a staff report. Are there other announcements? Ms. Pressing.
We, we have an artist from China who will be visiting us from our sister city area in China on April 20th, so we'll hear more about that.
Okay. Any, any other announcements? Okay, we should now move to, before we move to approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, I would just remind the audience that we invite public participation, but we ask that you fill out one of these yellow public input cards that are available at the back of the room and, and pass it to Ms. Clark if you, if you wish to speak. I have, I have three of these already from Mr. Bradfield, Ms. Donaldson, and Reverend Dr. Underwood. Okay, we should move now to the approval of minutes of previous meeting. Here, a motion from Mr. Smythe and a second from Mr. Lewis. Is there, are there any comments, questions, or corrections? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ayes have it. Now, public comment. Mr., Mr. Bradfield and Doc, Bishop Underwood and Reverend Dr. Underwood wished to speak at time of, of the issue, but Ms. Donaldson would like to speak now, so. And we, we know you, but please state your name and address for the record.
It's Carletta Donaldson, 406 East Brookins Drive in Urbana. I have an announcement tomorrow evening at the Champaign Public Library, 6:00. Illinois Public Media will be screening Wonder Women, The Untold Story of American Superheroines. And then after that, there will be a panel discussion, and that will include Professor Carol Tilly, who is an Assistant Professor at the U of I Graduate School of Library and Information Science, Kevin Hamilton, who's an Assistant Professor in the U of I School of Art and Design, and Rachel Storm, who is an Assistant Director of the U of I Women's Resources Center. So that's tomorrow evening. If you happen to miss that or are unable to attend, sorry about that, the film will air on April 15th at 9:00. Now, I put on that I had an announcement, but I also have two.
Sorry, where will the film air?
At the Champaign Public, oh, on W I L L TV, Channel 12, Comcast, Channel 13. Sorry about that. I just have a question. I noticed, I've been coming to the city council meetings on a pretty regular basis since about April, and I've only noticed a few times that you've done the Pledge of Allegiance beforehand, and so I'm not sure what designates whether there is a Pledge of Allegiance or if I've missed something, that it was canceled out, or.
Mayor Pressing, I think you, you take the lead on that.
Yeah, this was a policy that was adopted by a previous city council, I'm not sure which one, but we do the Pledge of Allegiance after there's been a break in the schedule because of a holiday.
Okay. So a break in the schedule because of a holiday.
Right, if we, if we miss a meeting because of a holiday, then we have the Pledge of Allegiance at the following meeting.
Okay. And then I noticed that you have the flyer for the Malawi Mixer.
I do.
Is there a time on that, so at least? I know you said that more information is coming, but if there's a time, that would be helpful.
It's going to be, it'll start at 5:30.
Okay.
And go to 9:00.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Is the Malawi mixture on, or could it be placed on the city website?
It certainly can be, yes.
So, who, who's, okay, so it looks as though Ms. Tyler said that would happen. Okay, now we'll, oh, yes, Mr. Bowersox Johnson.
Yeah, I also had one that I think falls under public input. I got a letter, and I don't know if it was mailed to all council members, but about a week, 10 days ago, a letter dated February 28th to the UBA from, from downtown retailers. Did other city council members, okay. And hopefully city staff got it too. I know it said CC to Libby Tyler and to the mayor, and to Bill Gray and Tom Corino. The, I think it was a very good letter. The letter in brief had to do with subtle things about how the arrangement at the Sweet Corn and the layout of it, especially on Main Street, can either be kind of a make-or-break deal for downtown retailers. It can either break their whole weekend and stop all the customers from getting to their stores and, you know, have it, have it be a weekend where they don't make any money. Or it can introduce a new pool of customers to those retailers and to all the great stuff in downtown Urbana. And it all can change on simple subtle, you know, is the booth here or is the booth five feet over, kind of thing, so that people can see the retailers and get into them on Main Street. So, I, I thought it was really helpful to start a dialogue. I know there's a lot more specifics that probably should be talked about at the UBA planning level, but I just wanted to pass on that I think it's really important that we have the dialogue so that even with subtle shifts in arrangement, we can really make it a weekend that introduces people to downtown Urbana and brings new customers into stores. So, Bill, is that something that the conversation would happen next, maybe with you and UBA folks, or how can, how can the conversation proceed so that sometime between now and August or September, we, we talk more about it with UBA?
The, excuse me, the timing of the receipt of the letter was good because Friday we had our monthly Streetscape Committee meeting, which is staff members, which always includes UBA, and UBA two representatives were there. That was on the agenda.
Great.
So we did talk about that letter. As a follow-up, there was another meeting with some of my staff and UBA after that meeting, and I do know that as the planning process will be starting up in earnest for the Sweet Corn Festival, that we definitely want to have representatives that sign that letter to be part of that planning process.
Okay.
So that we can address their concerns. We think that most, if not all, can be addressed.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you, that's wonderful.
Mr. Lewis.
One thing I noticed, Bill, and maybe since I won't be a part of your meeting, but you can share with them, we've had an opportunity to utilize that big stage on Brad, on Broadway, and I noticed that Black Dog and the other one right on the corner, if it could be moved to the south, kind of in-between, it might help alleviate some of the traffic right there at that point, so that, that those businesses won't be concerned, because, you know, there's a lot of changing of the guard and per se, whatever, and it seemed to be problematic for the businesses right there at that point. I'd like to mention that to you.
Okay.
Any other public input? Okay, so, moving on, the first order of business is the Resolution Number 2013-03-006-R, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Urbana School District 116 for installation of bike parking facilities. Is there a staff presentation?
What you have before you is an intergovernmental agreement with Urbana School District 116. IDOT requires this, since we are the receipt, we receive the Safe Route to School grant, and within that grant, there are bike racks that will be purchased. Again, this is a 100% funded grant. We are seeking permission and received permission, in fact, from the school district to place these bike racks on a variety of schools, as mentioned in the memo. So, what we're seeking tonight is approval of this agreement. School district has to commit to maintaining those racks once they're installed. Hopefully for the next 20 years, they'll be still in good shape, but, anyway, this is all part of the process in order for us to receive the grant money.
Yes, so Mr. Smythe would like to respond.
Yeah, Bill, have they, has the school board already approved this, or?
Oh, I'm sorry, they have.
They have, okay.
The school board, at their last meeting, did approve this.
Okay.
And I will move to send this council recommendation for approval.
Okay, there's moved by Mr. Smythe, seconded by Mr. Bowersox Johnson, but I think I saw a comment in hand from Mr. Roberts.
Just a question. I don't have any problem with supplying bike racks at the schools. I think it's an important thing to encourage bicycle use. I do see that, that in some of the sites, we, there are rather large, they call them herringbone or comb si, comb styled bike racks. And so, I guess I want to know what makes them unusable now? They're being re-exchanged for U-shaped ones or something, and if they've worked in the past, what makes them now unusable? I guess I'm wondering about, you know, unnecessary replacement. So.
Maybe some of our bike users might want to comment on this.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, they never worked very well in the past. So many bikes would get, get their wheels bent out of shape by being knocked over or whatever, and those.
In addition, you can't secure a bike properly to, to those as well, so.
Because.
You can't, you can't.
What's, where, is it because where it's being secured?
Well, typically it's front wheel, you can't get, you can't get a lock around the frame, that sort of thing.
Okay.
So, so modern locks are typically U-bolt type devices and.
Right.
Do at least a wheel and the frame at the same time.
So people want the frames to be locked?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, yep. It's, it's really.
I know that you could take a wheel off, that's why.
No, it's a security thing, and, and it is also spacing and damage and all those sorts of things. They're just very unwieldy to use. And it's why we have a recommended, we have a design recommendation on the city website that we ask businesses and apartments and so on to use.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Bowersox, oh.
I just want to let everybody know that while we're going through this process, we're going to change the hoop bike racks at the city building complex, the current racks to more of the hoop shaped racks. So that's going to hap, right, so that's going to happen too at this time while we're putting this big order in.
Any other comments or questions with respect to that, so we can entertain a motion? Oh, that's right, Mr. Smythe moved, and it was seconded by Mr. Bowersox Johnson, so, and I don't think we need a roll call on this. So, in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposition? Okay, it, this, this passes. So now we move to the Community Development Services Grant Management Annual Action Plan, and we have a staff person who will make these voluminous ordinance changes crystal clear to all in short order.
I hope. So I will spend most of my time on this first memo, the other two are kind of just the more technical procedural stuff. So, there are two amendments that are being presented to council and were unanimously forwarded by the CDC with a recommendation for approval. The First Amendment is in regard to our CHODO project funds, Champaign County Neighborhood Alliance, which is the, I guess, it's the parent organization, Habitat for Humanity. They have requested $200,000 in CHODO project funding and $28,250 in operating. We did not have $200,000 at the time of the request. And the Home Technical Committee, which is the City of Champaign, the City of Urbana, and Champaign County, recommended funding them for the funds that we did have available, which was $159,279.89. And then in regard to the operating, the Home Technical Committee discussed it and agreed that it would be, in, in every, to everybody's benefit to go to a sort of pro-rata operating allocation process, so on a per-unit kind of basis. And based on the funds that we had available, we're hoping this would incentivize building more in the community. The Home Technical Committee recommended $7,000 per unit, and Neighborhood Alliance has agreed to construct four new single-family homes in our community development target area, and that would amount to $28,000 in operating. So, that is the First Amendment. The Second Amendment comes in three parts. The consortium met to discuss funding opportunities for our TBRA programs. There are several going on in the community right now, and we had been approached by basically all of our subrecipients looking for, for more money. The programs have been strong, they've been going well, and they're requesting additional funds. On page three of the memo is a breakdown of where the consortium has recommended funding contracts. I'll start from the bottom up. The Center for Women in Transition currently runs a program. They receive a subcontract through the City of Champaign, and they've requested an extra $80,000 to continue their program. Community Elements also operates a program. They were willing to take on $55,000. That was the most they said they could administer in the coming fiscal year. Champaign County runs the No Limits Program, which council will be familiar with, I've discussed that several times, and is serving the most clientele by far, and they've requested $100,000. And then the City of Champaign subcontracts to different entities, and they are hoping to keep pumping TBRA into our community, and so $148,000 and change has been allocated to that. So that's the first part of the Second Amendment. The second part is in regard to Homestead Corporation's homebuyer contracts. They were under contract to construct two houses, one at 1107 North Gregory, which is over in the East at Lincoln neighborhood, and another at 1304 Williamsburg, which is over in Champaign, just north of Bradley, between Prospect and Mattis. Due to the tight lending restrictions that are currently in place, the higher price points that Homestead offers in terms of what they build, and the higher income level that is required to be able to afford a house at the price point that they build, they were having a hard time finding that perfect buyer, which is really what's required. They were able to sell 1109 North Gregory, that is closed, completed, the buyer's happy, but 1107's buyer fell through, and they were not able to find one in time within the contract timeline that they had set, which is imposed on us at this point by HUD. So, basically HUD was telling us that we would have to turn it into a rental unit, and we wanted to do that in a smart way. And you, council will hopefully recall that we have the 510 East Spearsley Project, which is the transitional housing unit being built by Homestead to be, brought as a transitional housing unit by SEWIT, and we wanted to structure this house in the same way. So, the contract for 1304 Williamsburg is $150,000 of CHODO home funding. That was to fully finance the unit, which is something new that we were trying, we were hoping it would work, and it would sort of create a revolving construction loan to bring down the cost of building the homes, but that money is no longer committed at this point, and so that is available, and the home consortium has recommended putting some of those funds from 1304 into the 1107 North Gregory Project. This is because the 1107 North Gregory Project is already half-constructed. They moved forward, they had a buyer, then things fall through in the middle, and at this point, we would be out, the city would be out for that money, and we would have to pay it back to HUD if we, you know, didn't turn it into a rental soon. So, that being said, Community Elements, we reached out to them, and they have agreed to operate it as an affordable rental unit for a full 20-year affordability period. And so the numbers work out. I listed them out on page four. The current award for 1107 North Gregory is $55,010. And the home consortium, based on the pro forma that was provided to us by Homestead and, you know, similar financing and what it's cost to build other houses, particularly of 1109, the full financing of the unit would be $153,100. And this is to fully subsidize it, so that there is no end mortgage for the nonprofit. This, this isn't a project that they planned for, this is how we structured it for the Center for Women in Transition, if you'll recall. And this was mostly to incentivize the fact that they're going to have to operate it on their own. The city isn't providing any funds whatsoever to, you know, for that 20-year operating period. And then part three, and I'll take questions at the end, if there are any, part three is a CHODO demolition fund that we are setting up for Neighborhood Alliance. They had approached us to purchase a property, which will come up later this evening. It was formerly 1006 North Wright Street, and it has, it was a double lot, which has been split again to its original plat, and is now 1409 and 1411 West Beach. And these are two of the lots that Neighborhood Alliance intends to build on as part of that contract that I mentioned earlier for the four single-family homes. And in the past, we have not allowed our CHODOs to do the demolition portion of the project, mostly because of the 12-month rule of breaking ground, and you have to continually draw funds every three months. So you couldn't just demo it and sit on it for a while, which is what we're able to do if we acquire it with CDBG. We cannot do that with home, which is why we've never felt comfortable enough, you know, allowing a CHODO to undertake that activity, since we had the leftover CHODO funds from the de-obligated funding from the 1304 project, which is that, on page four, that breakdown, the 51,910 that was left over, it made sense because there was some existing structure, a parking lot on one of those lots that Neighborhood Alliance could tear down. We recommended starting a pool to allow them to do those things and move projects along. And we're confident that Neighborhood Alliance could do that. They have already built three of the, built and sold three of the four houses that they were under contract for 1112, so they've been moving really quickly. They have buyers secured and sales contracts, everything's going very well, so. I can take any questions on the two amendments.
Mr. Bowersox Johnson.
The only question I have is, was at the same meeting as part of all these topics, in the minutes I saw some discussion about Ecolab's role going forward, and I know they're not really a CHODO going, it's the same question Charlie had, okay. They're not really a CHODO, they're not really building new projects at this point, but they expressed some interest in working with Homestead, Habitat, others, I think it was specifically maybe Homestead and the developer, on maybe making some of those projects more energy efficient. So I guess I just wondered, from your perspective, sort of what is the status of Ecolab's CHODO role or other role, and can they play a supportive or educational role even in helping some of our other housing be more energy efficient? role even in helping some of our other housing be more energy efficient, even if they're not building more projects themselves?
I think the project you were referring to was the Kerr Avenue Development, which, you know, they've applied, homestead and Bridgewater applied for text credit financing but haven't received it. Ecolab was hoping to, you know, partner on that project. In terms of assisting, well, they are still a CHODO, I will say. They still have, they're renting out 1302 West Dublin. That was a lease purchase and has not closed yet. The renter is still renting, has not converted to ownership. She has until June or July of next year of 2014 to do so. So I will say that Ecolab is still operating in the sense that they are, you know, renting out this unit and fixing things as needed and working with a potential homebuyer to close on that project. I have, we are expecting to meet with Katrine Klingenberg this week, hopefully. We were kind of missing each other. She's out of town fairly often. But yeah, we're hoping to talk with her and see what her plan is. I know that Passive House Institute US, which is sort of the parent organization of Ecolab, has definitely shifted towards an educational, you know, direction. So I'm not sure, construction wise, if they have a plan. That's kind of why we're hoping to meet with her and see, you know, how they plan to move forward. So, but that's a good question.
Okay, great.
Mr. Smythe.
Well, extending Brandon's, can this money be used, leftover money be used in any way on Kerr Avenue?
If they were to receive text credit financing, yes. It would, as long as we're putting home funds into it. It's a little sticky with how they expect you to spend the money. You kind of have to allocate it to specific activities throughout the project. You can't just put home funds in for acquisition and then leave an open project for five years. You have to have a specific unit, an address, a very defined plan. So these funds, my guess, will be allocated to other projects that are, you know, more readily upcoming, I suppose. I guess the ducks would have to be in a row for the Kerr Avenue project, which will hopefully happen sooner rather than later. But yes, that project would hopefully be eligible for home funds.
But, but you have some other ideas for the leftover money, then?
At this point, we, no one has requested it yet. So it is just being left unobligated. We do that, we usually have about a year's worth of funding sitting around until a CHODO is ready to move. And I did mention, I mean to mention that the consortium has moved to a rolling application process for that very reason, is, you know, their building season doesn't always fit with our funding season. And so, our funding cycle, rather. And so we wanted to give our CHODOs more flexibility in when they requested funds so they could really be ready when they're asking for the funding to build.
Okay. Ms. Marlin.
Just had a couple of questions based on some concerns that were raised in the Community Development Commission meeting. The first was a reference to the fact we apparently, or we may be required to list our faith-based partners who are working with us in federally-funded projects. Is that to be listed on the website?
Yes. And I have been working with Dr. Reverend Eugene Barnes, who visited the commission meeting to come into compliance with that. It was an executive order, I think that was passed in 2002 and was recently updated by President Obama. And he had set forth sort of advisory body who was going to make recommendations on how to move forward and really, you know, act on this executive order. And one of the recommendations, or requirements, rather, of entities such as the City of Urbana was to put that information on our website. So I've been working with him. I know that he's approached the City of Champaign on the same issue. And so both of us are working to make sure that we're in compliance with that.
Okay, great. And another topic that was brought up was the request for an inventory of the city lot, the lots that the city owns currently that could be used for affordable housing and then our historical levels. Can the city council get a, I'd like to see that list, that inventory when it's done. And do you think criteria will change at all to reflect the new economy and differences in tightened up lending requirements? Or, I mean, do we have any recommended level of inventory that we're supposed to be maintaining?
I think it's really contingent upon the funding that we have available. It's all sort of how the market pans out. So if the prices of, you know, the price of land were to go up, we obviously wouldn't be able to buy as many properties. Certain deals come through quickly and we have to act on them. But I am curious as well to see historically what we've done. It also does reflect, you know, what our, what the capacity of our CHODOs is and what their demand is for those properties. It isn't sort of a standalone program. It is supposed to kind of go alongside our CHODO's construction phases.
So, so we'll get a current list and then a historical?
Yeah, I didn't have it ready for tonight. We're planning on taking it to commission. But I'll be sure to bring it to council.
And then the TBRA, which is tenant-based rental assistance for our viewing audience. The countywide allocation, is that available by any chance for relocation expenses, like we, what we were dealing with, with these condemnations? Or is it a, is that not allowed?
Um, no, not relocation. But an eligible expense under TBRA is security deposits. So that, I would say, is part of relocation. But I don't know that that is currently within the, you know, procedural manual that the county has in place for how they go through their waiting list.
Could Urbana residents access these county, as county residents, can they access these funds?
Yes. The county's program is open to Champaign, Urbana, and county residents. So.
So you say it's possible, but?
I would say it's possible within the confines of the waiting list, though. So I'd have to check back with RPC, the Regional Planning Commission, to see how that really, you know, looks, what their process is.
And then my last question is the effect of the sequestration, which was mentioned. The CDBG is like an 8.2% cut, or you're assuming?
Yes.
Is that across the board or just for the CHODO?
That would be across the board for our home and our CDBG programs. So that's what we're planning for with our next annual action planning process, is just an 8.2% cut. I've heard rumors that it may be less, more like 5%. But we obviously won't know until we get word from HUD. But as of right now, we're planning for another cut. So.
Thanks.
Are there other questions?
I'll make some motions.
Mr. Smythe.
I'll move the, the two items under 6A here. Ordinance number 2013-03018, an ordinance approving modifications of the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium, 2011, 2012, 2012, 2013 annual action plans, which is the winter home CHODO amendment. And then ordinance number 200, amend, ordinance number 2013-319, an ordinance approving modifications of the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium, fiscal year 2008, '09, '10, '11, '11, '12, and '12, '13 annual action plans, the tenant-based rental assistance programs, CHODO demolition funds, and 1107 North Gregory CHODO project.
And I'll second.
To council with a recommendation for approval.
Approval, it has been moved and seconded to forward these two ordinances to full council with recommendation for approval. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, in the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Now we move to Resolution 2013-03-007R, and I suspect perhaps -008R. And so, staff.
Sure. The only item in this memo that I haven't already mentioned is the certification for Neighborhood Alliance. The Department of Housing and Urban Development is now requiring that each time we grant a funding award to our CHODOs, we're required to certify them as CHODO. So we have to go through all of their paperwork. They have to submit everything, you know, cross their Ts, dot their Is, which normally we followed sort of an annual basis. It was a lot easier. But I think HUD's just being extra careful to cover everything. And so this is the process that we're moving to. So it is very possible that we may have to certify a CHODO, you know, two or three times a year, depending on the contracts that are made, you know, throughout that year. And so I, I would say that's the only additional thing in this packet. And that's more procedural, just making them eligible for the receipt of the funds that are allocated in each contract for the project funds and the operating.
Any, yes, Mr. Smythe.
I'll just move these two. Resolution 20, oh.
Yes, there are three. I misspoke.
Yep, I got it.
It's 009 also.
Okay, I'll move all three here. Resolution 2013-037R, which is a resolution certifying community housing development organization for Urbana Home Consortium, which is Neighborhood Alliance. Then 8R is the Neighborhood Alliance for Habitat Affordable Housing, Home Ownership Program. And then the third one, 09R, is Champaign County Neighborhood Alliance for Habitat CHODO Operating March 2013. Why are those split into two? Anyway, I'll move all three to council with a recommendation for approval.
Moved by Mr. Smythe, seconded by Mr. Lewis. In favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, in the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Now, the third item is, in this packet, is sale of real estate.
These are the two lots that I was discussing earlier, 1409 Beach Street and 1411 Beach. Neighborhood Alliance has buyers for these properties. And they are ready to construct on them.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2013-03-020, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 1409 Beach Street, and ordinance 2013-03021, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 1411 Beach Street.
Okay, moved by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Smythe. In favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, in the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. We now move to ordinance 2013-02-016, repealing 2007-12-138, and establishing a cost reimbursement policy for repair of illegal connections of private sanitary sewer laterals, and repair privately-owned sanitary and storm sewer service laterals. We have six public input. We have three people who have indicated that they do not wish to address the council but wish to be recorded in opposition. They are Dell Owens of 1310 Eureka, Shirley Hershey of 1309 Ellis Drive, and Ether Reed of 1307 Tremont Avenue. And then we have three people who wish to address the council. I believe that it, oh, and maybe we have actually an additional person who, thank you, who also wishes to address the council. We have four people who wish to address the council. Now, let me ask, do you wish to address the council immediately? Or would you like to address the council after this is introduced and, and council has discussed, but before we vote? I, I think we can, okay, so, so let's hear, so, okay, so let's have this introduced by, by Mr. Gray. And then we'll have a chance for public input.
What was in the packet was just the ordinance that we talked about a couple Mondays ago. I was asked to put this on the agenda for tonight for reconsideration, for a second time. I can report that staff is still looking into the study of lateral sewer maintenance and costs associated with maintenance within the right-of-way, ownership within the right-of-way. And we're still a few weeks away before we'll report on that.
Mr. Marlin?
I'm pointing at Diane.
I'm pointing at Diane, yeah. And you're pointing at Diane, so I said, Mr. Marlin. So, and I know why you're pointing at Diane, because, but I don't know. Do you, do you wish to say anything, Ms. Marlin?
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Smythe. I will speak. I, I asked to bring this back for reconsideration because I believe that while we are studying alternatives to our current policy, we have an opportunity to provide some financial, additional financial assistance to the people who may need it this year. And it's not an either-or situation. We can evaluate alternatives, particularly the plan that was described by Mr. Bradfield for the Dr. Ellis subdivision residents, and still pass this ordinance now because we know, based on our experience, that five to 10 property owners this year will experience a, a situation where they are going to have to repair streets and sidewalks. And that's the especially costly part, which is why the residents have been, been coming here for many, many weeks now. So there's no reason for us not to, in my mind, pass this ordinance so that we can provide the additional assistance to those who may need help this year while we are studying alternatives. And in reality, the, if we do decide to change our policy, and there's a lot of planning that needs to go into that before we make that decision, the earliest it could probably be implemented would be next year, after, after some months of work in getting a new program in place. So again, I think there's no reason why we shouldn't make this money available to people. The money is in the sewer benefit, is in the sewer fund. It comes from the sewer benefit tax. And I think taxpayers should have access to their tax dollars if they need them this year. So that's why I would support the ordinance being passed.
Is there, is there other?
Question of staff.
Question of staff, yes.
Yeah. Bill, do you have any rough ideas of how long it's going to take to do all the research and so on? And I know it's, we're going into construction season and such. So, so there's a lot of, lot of time pressure from other things. So I think, I think part of this is give you a little more time. But do you have a rough idea of when you might start coming back with the costs and estimates and all that?
We think we can meet on the second Monday in April is the timeframe.
I'm sorry, meet to consider the?
Staff report, yes.
Staff, okay, yeah. Okay. Okay, maybe we can, maybe we should move to, the first three slips I had right at the beginning of the meeting. So I don't know who is, who is, who really got it, got it here first. But I'll call first Reverend Dr. Underwood.
I would defer to our representative, Mr. Bradfield.
Okay.
Mr.?
Sure. So, Mr. Bradfield?
Thank you.
And as always, although you're a good friend, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Rex Bradfield. I live at 2101 and a half Pond Street in Urbana. Very quickly, I will just speak briefly on reconfirming what the, the neighborhood wanted. And just a couple of answers to questions that were posed the last time that I sent to the council in a package. Did everybody get that package?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then I'd like to thank the council for turning this matter over to Bill. I have great faith in whatever he does. I've known Bill for a number of years. And I know that whatever he comes up with is going to be something worth considering. Very quickly, the summary is the city pays for its service connection pipe to the lot line per 214. And the owner pays for the building sewer pipe according to 2438C. In the new ordinance, just to summarize a couple of things, the city is, is only paying up to $4,500. That's not 75% when you start talking about percentages. And that was in my report I had the last time. It's a lesser amount, around 41%. I think that everyone has to be careful that the ordinance is kind of deceptive in its use of percentages rather than actual costs and what those percentages are actually applied to. The language in the ordinance says reasonable cost of material and label, labor involved in removal and repairs of alley or street pavement, sidewalk, and necessary backfill to effectuate such removal and replacement up to $4,500. The reasonable cost is, that's the question, what is reasonable cost? But it's very obvious that if a person decides to use slip lining or pipe bursting, that the city, according to this ordinance, is not going to, to pay for it. Few of the questions. Council, Councilwoman Marlin, you mentioned, and I didn't, I didn't do this in the thing because I lost my note. But you said, "I have a long backyard sewer and I don't see how it's equal to me compared to the short runs." I think that was the first thing you asked. It's fair because the building sewer was constructed by the owner of the property prior to your ownership, or maybe by yourself. You knew it had a long backyard when you bought the house. And that was a concern. If that was a concern, or the type of pipe material was a concern, you could protect yourself prior to buying the property by asking the price be reduced by the previous owner. A property owner whose long pipe is under the street doesn't have that protection. You can't ask the city to do something that they've already rang the bell. Mr. Roberts, I thought your question was an excellent question. And I, and I, when you brought that up, I thought, man, that's, that's perfect. Your question was, what if the pipes clogged? The city does not want to be figuring out a proportional payment for the pipe. What a mess that would be. But I talked to a lot of the sewer contractors. And the sewer contractor said, "Most of the time, we do ..." "Most of the time, we just go out there and if it's drill it out or do whatever, it's just a lump sum. It's only if they run into a whole bunch of trouble that it turns anything else." And like I said in my report to you, that would be a really good time to maybe the city participate in the cost of the clean-out. The clean-out is so important to anything that you do because the clean-out is the way that the city has access. It's the way the property owner has access. It's cheap, but that might be a really nice time to do that. And also, that type of activity is something that really lends itself to that herbicide root material products that cleans it out rather than the copper sulfide or sodium hydroxide. Mr. Bowersox, the property owner may receive less money with the proposed way. I don't think that's true because of the language...
Mr. Bradfield? Mr. Bradfield, you have one minute.
Okay.
You can't pass your minutes on. He gets five minutes and that's it.
Okay. Now, I lost my train of thought. What was I saying?
And then Bowersox's question.
Oh, okay. No, I don't think that they'll receive less money because of that phrase in there, "reasonable cost of material and labor involved in removal and repairs of alley or street payments." They're not going to get any money for their repairs that they do in their own yard. It's only if it gets out in the right-of-way you run into street and stuff like that. So, I don't think it does it. And, well, as my wife says, shut up, Rex. I'm done. Thank you very much for your time.
My partner says, "Thank you, Sister Row." So, in this room, Phyllis is our in loco spouses. So, are there any other comments or questions on this issue? Yes, Mr. Lewis?
Well, I know that this is... I talked to Mrs. Marlin about... I remember talking to the comptroller about the level in which we could go in terms of funding for whatever problems might occur. This was the upper limit for that. But my thought was similar to hers. If somebody had an issue or a problem between now and time, we get this figured out, they would have access to some funding and some grants that could offset the cost of a potential big problem. So, I think it behooves not only the folks in each subdivision, but throughout our community that may need some assistance during this time where we figure this all out. So, I think it's a good idea to push the envelope on the money as best we can. I've done additional research myself. I know that other cities in the country are taking on this responsibility. And I saw just recently, I got an email, Bill, about our right-of-ways for public works. And the... It may not happen in the subdivision, but it could, where other people are asking for access too. So, it could be very problematic for cities not to have full control over their right-of-ways. And the reason for that is because there's so many other people needing access to right-of-ways for such things as fiber, other forms of communication underground, lighting systems, whatever. So, they had a special course. I don't know. I wasn't going to take it, but I thought I'd mention it to you. But these kinds of issues are coming up all over the country because, number one, our infrastructure is failing. And, number two, we have to be proactive as a city to be able to take on that responsibility and be able to do it economically, not only for the city, but for the constituents that's paying the taxes for them. So, I think it behooves us to take an opportunity here to raise the ante and do our best shot at seeing if we can take over this infrastructure.
I owe an apology to Reverend Melinda Carr. I apologize, Reverend Carr. I overlooked your slip, wishes to speak on this issue on behalf of the Ministerial Alliance of Champaign-Urbana. Would you like to speak at this time?
I didn't have very many words. I think I really made it.
Yeah. And I apologize. I should have called on you earlier, but...
No, that's fine. Thank you. Reverend Melinda Carr, President of the Ministerial Alliance of Champaign-Urbana and Vicinity. And I really just wanted to make that clear for the record. In the times that I have been speaking, I have been speaking on behalf of the Ministerial Alliance. So, that's not just me, but there are other pastors and ministers who are a part of the organization. So, that's basically what I wanted to say, and that we do continue to support the residents and their stance in this issue. Thank you.
No, 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 no. So...
I didn't give my time.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. So, you still wish to speak? Oh, okay. Okay, Mr. Smythe had it right. I had it wrong. Yes, please, please come forth with my apologies.
My husband was willing to give his five minutes.
Okay. I'm sorry. But you're two different people. My wife has to keep reminding me of that, too.
Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, 1309 West Tremont Street in Urbana. The Honorable Urbana City Council and our Mr. Jacobson. You're the person in charge. I honor you in that position, right?
Yes, I'm doing my best.
Given the number of uses of the 2007 ordinance, that $3,000 I'm talking about, we do not see the urgency... And I think I said in there that I'm speaking on behalf of Dr. Ellis subdivision because I've spoken to a number of people, and that's why I'm reading what I'm saying, about to say, because it's not my words. It's a combination of what the people were saying to me. We do not see the urgency of repealing the ordinance and replacing it with the 2013 ordinance, the 4,500 at this time, which is, as we see, a stopgap measure. We, the Dr. Ellis subdivision residents, thought that your staff personnel were going to bring the entire matter to you, to us, in four to six weeks. So, we're just wondering why now. Also, we're not interested in this stopgap measure. Under this ordinance or these ordinances, any methodology... That's my word. I didn't know what else to call it. Other than tearing up the streets. Other than tearing up the streets, one gets, or a resident gets, nothing. Zero. Thank you. Any questions of me?
I have... I do have a question of staff relevant to what you said. But I'll... So, let me ask...
What I'm saying, what I'm saying gets zero because unless you tear up the streets... I think somebody called it pipe's name. I don't know pipes and stuff. But if you do it any other way, just like Mr. Lewis down the street, like he was saying, his was not... He didn't have to tear up the street. He used a different methodology, a methodology. And maybe it's something other word better than that. He did a busting, a pipe busting, or whatever, and he got nothing. I think somebody said, "Because the street was not torn up." And under the ordinance, the old one and the new one, it's the same. Is that right, Bishop?
Let me ask a question. Bill, am I correct that the only effect of this action, should we take it, would be to increase compensation to any homeowners who are affected between now and the time that the fully redeveloped ordinance comes into effect? Is that correct?
Yes.
So, what's...
So, in other words, the only effect of passing this would be to increase compensation to any affected homeowners who happen to run into trouble between now and the time that the complete ordinance comes into effect? So, we're not, you know, putting off effecting the ordinance, bringing to you the ordinance that we ultimately want to pass, which I think is consistent with what you're asking for. But we want it in the interim, since it would fit within our budget, to increase compensation to anybody who's affected in the interim. So, that's the purpose and would be the effect of this.
So, I'm sure some of the people listening to it, but I just don't understand why now? Why not wait until everything come in at the same time and then we deal with the whole matter at one time? Then during the stopgap measure?
Because we can increase compensation. Suppose something were to happen to somebody anywhere in the city, including your neighborhood, tomorrow or next week? This ordinance would increase their compensation over what we have now.
If they tear up the streets, it's six to $10,000 and someone just heard someone... Yeah, I don't want to get into that because it was hearsay.
Actually, we agree with you completely. And we're working on that ordinance. Our people are working on that ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. He's making you shut up, so...
Bishop Underwood, would you like to speak?
I'm Bishop King James Underwood of 1309 West Tremont Street in Urbana. And my thought about the money is that I have found it in our neighborhood that when we ask for access to that money, there are certain rules and laws that keep us from receiving benefits. And it's nothing is said about how it's going to be used, that it will be usable and what the law criteria is that we might receive benefits also. So, if the money is there and we can't use it, it's on the book, but it's not used by us, but it's used by someone else. And that was my thought. Thank you.
Bishop? Yeah, Bishop? If you would entertain a follow-up question, do you know the addresses of any of those places where people have had this type of sewer repair and they've found for one reason or another that they're unable to get this kind of reimbursement?
Well, I myself is one. We had the city come out and they brought the cameras out. And I had a time to get the city to come out to do the camera work and they thought it was unnecessary. But then, when they found what the problem was... And then Mr. Joe Lush down the street, he had the problem. And some years before, Mr. Hershey, who lived on Road Mine, had a problem. He had to tear up the street. At that time, I was living on Road Mine and he had to dig in my yard across the street and he had to pay for it himself out of his pocket. So, I'm saying that there's been some things inconsistency with the things in Dr. Ellis.
And do you know if those happened before 2007, before we had this program at all? Or if those three cases happened after 2007?
I know two did. Two just recently happened in this past year, and the other one was before.
And do you know, in those cases, why, in the two that were recent, you weren't able to access the reimbursement funding?
Because we had to pay upfront and then they would reimburse us. And that was the problem we brought earlier. We had to pay the whole thing and the city in turn would reimburse us so much.
Right. And did that work out? I mean, so did you pay the whole thing and then get the reimbursement back from the city? Or you said something happened?
No, we did not do it as yet.
Oh, okay. Because the project is unaffordable, given the big cost?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions from council? Yes, Ms. Hershey? Yeah, please come forward. Although you indicated you didn't want to speak.
Thank you.
I think we... Yeah, but please come up so that the microphone, we could get picked up on the telecast for the folks at home.
Thank you. It helps us so we can all hear your question. It is helpful.
Yes. Yes.
One thing I wanted to know, if... Since there are a lot of people up in Ellis subdivision who have now retired. Like, when I moved up there, I was 27 years old. And I want to know, at this time, I'm just on a little retirement. But I think my retirement would be more than what you would allow me to have as far as getting recompensated for the amount of money that they allow us to get. So, I don't... I just wanted to know about the money part, whether or not you have a special amount of money that people have to earn in order to...
And there are two programs, so maybe if staff want to describe each. I know this reimbursement that we're talking about is eligible to everybody. It doesn't have an income limit. So, if you have to do this kind of sewer repair, you would get this sort of reimbursement. Then above and beyond that, for people who are low-income, below a certain standard amount, there's a senior emergency grant type situation where you can come and you can say, "I'm a senior. I qualify under this income guideline and I would like this additional emergency grant to do the support and repair."
But how do I qualify?
That the community development staff here at the city have a phone number you can call. And I don't know, Bill or Libby, if you want to speak to how people access that. I think it is in our brochure, the draft brochure for this.
Yeah, we discussed the emergency grants program, which is what you're referring to. The program is available to income-qualifying homeowners for emergency home repairs, including replacing sewer laterals. The maximum funding per household through the emergency grant is $5,000. And for information, we mentioned our website. Or you can call Community Development Department also.
Yeah, but do I have to earn a certain amount of money? If I earn a certain amount of money, am I eliminated?
Those details are part of the grant application. But I can give you a phone number if you'd like to write this down or see me afterwards.
I'll see you afterwards because I don't have a pen.
And so, the two programs, the first one, the reimbursement, doesn't have any income limits and is eligible to everybody.
And how much is it for? $4,500?
Yeah.
But that's not 75%, though.
Right. That was... That one, if we pass this tonight, the limit would be up to 4,500 or 75%.
That's not 75%.
That's for the road and sidewalk work. And that's totally separate from the up to $5,000 for income-qualifying individuals as part of this emergency grant that Bill was speaking about. So, you can use both pots of funding, one plus the other, if you're eligible for the income-based funding.
Okay. I just... I wanted to know, but I didn't think the $4,500 was 75%. It's just 75% of...
Of the... Yeah. It's 75% of the road portion of the work.
Just the road portion. It's not 75% of the whole thing.
Right. And so, that other $5,000 for people who qualify could cover any other portion of the project.
Potential amount of money that you could potentially receive if you were income-eligible would be $9,500?
But see, income-eligible. That's what I keep hearing.
I know, but there's two pots. The other one, what they're saying is that the seniors have a requirement. I don't know exactly what all the details are. But potentially, you could have a $5,000 grant plus $4,500, which would be a total, if you were eligible for it, of $9,500 for a project. So, that might offset a lot of problems if one were...
So that might offset a lot of problems if, if one were to utilize that money.
Okay, but I, I thought as far as ordinances go, that we were just supposed to dig to the street, and the city's supposed to take...
Now, we're, we're still working on that part of it.
Okay.
But this was a, something that we put in place, just for now. The forty-five hundred dollars is for everybody. But there's also the other grant that's available, too.
But what about the people that have already paid six and seven thousand dollars, and they haven't gotten a penny from the city?
I can't address that.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Marlin?
I'd like to move approval of ordinance number twenty-thirteen dash zero-two dash zero-one-six. It's an ordinance repealing ordinance number twenty-oh-seven dash twelve dash one-three-eight in establishing a cost reimbursement policy for repair of illegal connections of private sanitary sewer service laterals to the storm sewer system, and repair of privately-owned sanitary and storm sewer service laterals.
And I'd second that.
I move sending this to council for approval. Did I say that?
Right. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. I'm sure that we will be, see us all again with the full ordinance, the full new ordinance in place. So thank you all. Meeting is adjourned.